You're open there when you're ready, Lisa.
All right, I gotta turn the mics on here.
Was that for the, it's Chris?
It says that thing crashed.
Computer, no, it is not the Word docs.
Oh, I'm talking about Word docs?
No, this is for my computer.
Oh, for your computer?
Yeah.
Oh.
Do you just have a print agenda? I'll just go from that if we have a print agenda. This happened last week too, I don't know what the issue is, I had it reset by tech.
Last week, you said?
Yeah. I'll follow along with Hillary, yes. Thank you.
Dr. Manning, you good?
I'm good.
Everybody good this way?
Yes, yes.
Lisa, we, okay. Alrighty, it's five oh one PM, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Alrighty, roll call has been taken, so we're gonna go move on to the pledge. Mr. Frazier, you wanna lead us?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Lisa, do we have any delegation? Okay. Alrighty, there's nothing in reports, so we'll go on to the consent agenda and start with the minutes.
Um, make a motion to move up item F on the agenda to before new business, so we can hear from Mr. Frazier and a presenter from Matheny Motors.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to move up item F in front of new business, um, so we can hear a special presentation from Matheny Motors and Mr. Frazier. Is there any further discussion to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Okay, so, I'll go ahead, let's finish the consent agenda and then I'll get them right in there. So we'll go back to the minutes there and get approval or disapproval on those.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January eighth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the regular meeting, regular meeting, shoot, we start over again. The regular meeting minutes of January eighth, twenty twenty four, is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the next set.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the expulsion hearing of January third, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes of the expulsion hearing on January third, twenty twenty four. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Okay, Christie, we're ready for the treasurer's report.
The first thing I have is schedule of checks to be written, if you have any questions or questions. And then the second thing is the treasurer's report for the month of December. If you look at it, on general current fund fund eleven, we brought in six hundred and seventy eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty nine dollars and sixty three cents in revenue last month. And then we spent eight hundred and sixty eight thousand, six hundred and ninety two dollars and seventy cents, leaving a month end balance of nine hundred and sixty five thousand, eight hundred and sixty nine dollars and forty one cents. Our expenditures exceeded our revenues, and this is common for this time of year because our taxes are lean due to the levy and stuff. We get more, more taxes around September, October, so this, this is common. The levy fund revenue was brought in was twenty two thousand, one hundred and forty seven dollars and eighty two cents. We expended eighty three thousand, nine hundred and seventy two dollars and seven cents, and that left the month end balance of one hundred and thirty five thousand, seven hundred and sixty nine dollars and sixty cents. And this is the same thing, it's with the, the tax, that's why the revenue's so low. For fund fifty one, um, the only revenue we had was twenty six dollars and four cents, which was just interest. The expenditures was a negative three hundred and thirty five thousand, seven hundred and seventy two dollars and eighteen cents. The reason for that negative is we were paying ESG out of fund fifty one, and it should've been out seventy one. So that negative actually dropped down to fund seventy one, that's worth of four hundred and twenty thousand. But that left the month end balance for fund fifty one a negative two hundred and twenty eight thousand, three hundred and twenty one dollars and fifty seven cents, and we're just waiting on some reimbursements there, so that's what that, that is. On fund sixty one, our revenue was two hundred and forty eight thousand, forty five dollars and thirty seven cents. We expended two hundred and fifty one thousand, three hundred and forty four dollars and nine cents, leaving the month end balance of eight hundred and ninety four thousand, nine hundred and ninety seven dollars and ninety seven cents. And, um, that difference is it's federal money, and we have to spend it before we request it, so there is some money there to be requested. And then fund seventy one, the COVID money, we got no revenue last month, and then we expended four hundred and twenty thousand, one thirty two forty, which is part of the fund fifty one. So that left, uh, us overspent for sixty one thousand, six hundred and forty seven dollars and ninety one cents. And once again, that, we have to spend it before we request it, and I requested some money there this morning, so we should be getting that in by next month. Any questions?
Thank you, Christie.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the treasurer's report, is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Alrighty, thanks, Christie. Mr. Frazier, and we'll let you head the floor.
I'll go for a little bit, and then I'll ask Mr. Larry Fallon with Matheny Motors to come up, and, uh, he's kind of the bus expert that we've dealt with through my tenure here as transportation director. First of all, I wanted to let the board know with the electric bus, what, what we're asking for acknowledgement for the sign is just an application. It does not guarantee we'll get the electric bus. It will just put Gummer County Schools in the lottery for a chance to get electric bus. I, I wanted to make sure the board understood that. Also, um, I, I think it's an opportunity for the board and the Transportation Department of Gummer County Schools to get a free bus, and that, that hasn't happened in the sixteen years I've been here, that, that you have this, this opportunity. It's a bus that's valued at four hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, and they'll be at little cost to us. The bus will be free, the cost to us will be a charging station, and I, and I'll get to that here in a minute. To understand this and completely understand, I think it's important that you understand two parts of money when it comes to transportation, because I think it does come down to money. I think it's a financial decision, uh, which, uh, a lot of our decisions do come down to money. The bus replacement allocation that we get each year is based on our fleet value. For basically what that means, for every bus that we have, twelve years or under, twelve years of newer, or a hundred and eighty thousand less money, we get one twelfth the value of that bus each year in our bus replacement allocation. Okay, so for example, um, if we, we usually on a diesel bus, which we have traditionally bought, and the only thing we've bought since I've been involved with Gummer County Transportation, we average spending a hundred and ten thousand dollars on a diesel bus, okay? So that math would add up, and when you do the one twelfth, for a diesel bus, we get thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars in reimbursement for that year, for, for over, over twelve years, for that diesel bus. Now again, that was at a hundred and ten thousand dollar value. The electric bus is at a four hundred thousand dollar value. When you do the math there, you would get forty eight thousand back, uh, each year for twelve years for that electric bus. So our bus allocation numbers, the money we get back, obviously there's going to be more money. It's a difference of around roughly thirty five thousand dollars a year. So just, I think it's important to understand the math on that, again, it's twelve years of newer, it's a hundred and eighty thousand less miles. If we get to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on a bus before twelve years, we still get the money, they just paid it in a lump sum. We don't get it each year if, if we reach that hundred and eighty thousand before it gets, uh, you know, twelve years old. So that, that's an important piece of this.
Can I just ask about that?
Yes.
Um, so you're saying it is in writing that that will happen?
I am saying currently that is the practice. Now, in full disclosure to the board, at, at some point, and I don't know who's listening here, but at some point, uh, someone may realize, hey, we're giving out all these
Right.
four hundred thousand dollar electric buses. What we're giving every county in their bus replacement money, that, that money's going up. And, but that is the way it currently is setting here today, is the way it's been throughout my tenure. Whether or not that's going to change, I, I, I don't know. Could it? Yes, but I, I don't know.
Now, the, the bus, the buying the bus, that's federal money?
Yes.
And the fleet replacement is state money, is that correct? The fleet?
The reimbursement.
The re, the allocation?
The yearly, whatever.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, but that is the current practice, it's been the practice for the lifetime of me, being in transportation of sixteen years. Larry's been in it way longer than I have, thirty plus.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
This is new.
Can you hit the part about, okay, so thirteen thousand, or thirteen two hundred for, for the diesel bus, forty eight, thirty five K difference? And then you said when it gets to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's when it shuts off? Will you say that part?
How many thousand miles or twelve years old?
Or twelve years old, the bus.
This bus, and, and I had it later, but I'll go ahead and hit up, this bus is never going to hit a hundred and eighty. This bus, when I see it going, I'll talk about Work County, Work County's running one right now, ran it all school year. Uh, but this bus, will be a bus, we won't take on trips. This bus will be on daily route, we will put this bus on daily route. I at first thought this bus is going to have to be a bus that's parked at our garage. When it works for our drivers and works for us, we do allow certain drivers to park their bus at home when the mileage works out for both of us, and, and it saves both of us money. This, this current Work County driver that's driving this bus, he drives his evening run in the evening, parks his bus at his house, makes his morning run in the morning, charges during the school day at, at the bus garage, and then does the same thing each day, that's his routine. Now he does, he does bring it into the garage and have it charging at the garage all weekend. Uh, but this bus will never, it, it won't reach to one eighty in twelve years. Could the process change, back to Dr. Millis' question? I, I can't speak to it, I do think at some point, somebody's probably going to look at this and say,
Well, that, that's why I was.
Our bus replacement for fifty five counties is going up every year.
That's why I was asking federal versus state dollars, because at some point the state's going to catch on and say, uh, wait a minute.
Man, and that's the part I cannot.
One thing, the, the state, and this is what confused me before, I thought this was signing up for the Nano and Beast. The state's actually also offering, um, reimbursement through the state with different buses, so.
You get an additional ten percent allocation, allocation for alternative fuel vehicles. So that's in addition to what he's talked about there. So you would get that regardless of what happened with the other. So if you have CNG, propane, work, and they just recently added, I predict the, the hospital, I spilled forty two seventy one or something, but they just recently changed that to twenty two to make allowance for that. And for the green power, they get an additional five percent, so instead of ten percent, it's fifteen, because it's built in West Virginia. Our buses are built in North Carolina, we, we just get the ten percent. So, uh, that's a difference, that's in addition to, to what he's talking.
There is another part of money, uh, which I just call it a transportation money, and Christie can give it a fancy name if you want, or whatever. I want you to understand that part, because the, the cost that would come associated with this, if we were awarded this bus, we will have to put a charging station in. We would work through Matheny Motors, they would work with us, working with Mon Power, to figure out where we're going to do this, how we're going to do this. At first, we thought they would have to be three phase. Work County's running this not on three phase, they're running this at a minimal. I do think we would have a cost there of, I'm going to say twenty five thousand, that's on the high end. That would come out of transportation money, Gummer County Schools transportation money. And if you want to look at that cost, the way that cost works and that money works, two years from now, if we pay for it out of transportation money, we get reimbursed at ninety five percent of that money, so we won't get it all back, but we'll get ninety five percent of that twenty five thousand, twenty thousand, fifteen thousand. I've been given a range, and Dr. Manning can speak to this, anywhere from five to twenty five thousand that we're going to have. So I want to give the board the highest number. Let's, if we, if this would happen, I want to say we're going to have twenty five thousand in this charging station. If we pay for it out of transportation money, two years from now, we would get reimbursed ninety five percent of that cost. Uh, I think that's important. So Work County Comics, I talked to their superintendent today, and I talked to their transportation director today, and they both were very knowledgeable of it, and I was, I was happy they talked to me. Uh, they, they ran it all year, one bus, and they have one. The rest of their fleet is diesel, they only have one. They did do it last year, they did apply for this last year, they did get it last year. It just, it took a while to get things set up. They've had zero issues with it. It looks like a regular Thomas diesel bus, as far as looks. The driver does park it at home, as I said earlier, makes his evening run, uh, makes his morning run, then charges at the bus garage. He does bring in a week is to the bus garage, so I guess to get max charge, or whatever you want, whatever you want to refer to it. They've had no power issues with the bus, the bus has as much power as the other. They've had no issues during this cold weather, and the weather in the last couple of weeks has been about extremes we usually face. I mean, it could get worse, but really about the worst conditions we face as a school system. It's quiet, uh, it's very quiet, the driver likes that it's quiet, students like that it's quiet. So, so that's kind of, I, I, I wanted to be brief and then try to answer questions, I wanted to save Larry time. My, my recommendation right now, which I don't even know if you're asking for my recommendation, but my recommendation right now would be to allow us to apply for this. We don't know if we're going to get it or not. Financially, I think it's, 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 it's the obvious choice in my mind. You guys can speak to yourself, but I do think financially it's a four hundred thousand dollar bus that we are getting handed. We do have to keep it five years. If we don't keep it five, if we don't like it, if it's a bust, if whatever, five years, we can sell this thing. But part of the deal is we would have to keep this bus for five years. I'm going to get you in just a second, if you don't care. My plan as transportation director would be to continue to recommend diesel buses to our superintendent. I, I, I just think that, that, that would be my plan. I don't think in my lifetime, uh, that we're ever going to have an all-electric fleet. Now we may, but I, I don't see that happening, I don't think it's going to be in, in my lifetime. And, and the reason, and, and I don't even know if we'd apply for one next year that I'd recommend it, and, and the reason that would be is battery life. With these things are new, we don't know how long this battery's going to last. This battery's, we have an eight-year warranty, we have a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar, or mile, a hundred and seventy five thousand mile warranty, but we don't know. And, and, and obviously the battery's a huge part of this bus. So the, the, I think Larry told me earlier today, you're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars to replace this battery. So this one's free, so to speak. And I know you can argue the free, you can argue the free, notice what costs the twenty five thousand to, uh, for the, uh, charging station, which it would. If we spent that money out of transportation money, two years later, we'd be reimbursed at ninety five percent.
The application, does the application only cover battery-powered buses? Or, because I know another part of the, you know, the Sewell Bus Act and the EPA is CNG buses and propane buses.
Correct, you, you can also, but you only get, I believe for propane, I, I think it's thirty thousand dollars. So that, that doesn't come close to covering the cost of the bus.
No, what about the CNG?
CNG, same thing, forty thousand, I believe.
So there's ties, they're pushing battery.
They're pushing, they are pushing electric, there's no question. And the problem with propane and the CNG is, is fueling infrastructure. As Joe mentioned, I've been doing this a long time, over, over thirty years. We, we've tried propane, we've tried CNG, and the infrastructure never came. So, we're starting to see the infrastructure come with the electric, so I'm, I'm looking to feel a little better toward it, but, but again, I, I.
That's on the manufacturing side too, just to be clear. That's, you know, you were, you've tried the CNG, but the infrastructure never came, you've tried this, the infra, now we're trying electric.
Here's just about five or six years ago, maybe a little bit longer, time flies. The big push was propane, they wanted everybody to go propane.
CNG, yeah.
A little, Jerry Gummack, our mechanic, who I kept hitting words in the bank, he said stay diesel, told him you could stay diesel. And don't get me wrong, if Gummer County Schools was buying a bus, and we're buying it.
And we will be buying.
Between electric, I'm buying diesel. And we've got a diesel one ordered. We, Larry's going to give a delivery date, one of these ones ordered for this year. So if, if Gummer County Schools is paying the money, I'm still a hundred percent, I'm going to buy diesel bus. This is just an opportunity that I, I think presents itself, and I think financially, I do think it makes sense right now.
Can I ask about the bus itself? Because last time when we talked about it, we weren't really sure, like, one of them was like a twenty passenger.
Yeah, this is a seven, this is a seven, seven passenger, he is a jewelry, he brought you a pamphlet on the bus. This bus is very, very similar to what you see us in every day, except it's electric.
Cause now, cause I talked to Mike after.
It fits in our garage.
I talked to Mike after the last board meeting. And the clearance was what he mentioned with that beast.
I got it on your website.
He said we couldn't make the turn with it. So this is different than the two we talked about.
Almost all our buses have seven, seven passengers, we do still have a few sixty six.
So this one has the clearance and it fits and.
Yes, and it will, uh, the, the beast gets worried about where you can take it, things like this.
Right.
This will be on round.
Transit, transit bus, it's one and a half feet tall.
It's like a charter bus, right?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that's like one of those great big Glenville State University buses with the flat nose up front and.
And to Dr. Manning, it was so easily, all three of these are come and do at the same time.
I, I honestly, the mistake was, I thought we were applying for the beast.
Well, that's because the state sent.
And they're sending out emails right now about the beast.
On all three buses, so I, that, I get how that happens. It's, it's a big confusion. Larry, do you want, Mr. Morton, do you want Larry?
Sure, sure. Go right ahead.
Yeah, the first thing I want to clarify is, everything that it said was reactive, except the bus stop is always free, because of the.
Okay.
The EPA. Yeah, the EPA award for this rebate round is, uh, three hundred and forty five thousand for a regular bus, or three hundred and sixty five thousand if you get a, a lift in it. And of course, I'm recommending to go, go and get the lift, because the lift does not add that much extra cost to it, so you get three hundred and sixty five towards, and, and it's not quite four hundred thousand. The actual cost of buses is probably going to be in the three hundred and ninety seven thousand range. I've, I've worked up a few, uh, you know, quotes to see where, where we'd be price-wise. And so, uh, there would be a little bit of cost for the bus, uh, that, uh, but for what you get in return, I think it's still a win. It's, again, it's, uh, it's going to pay you each year for having it, you're going to get the extra ten percent allocation. And if you look at the, the total cost of ownership sheet that was in there, I did for Lincoln County, it shows if you invested fifty thousand dollars in the cost for that electric bus. And I estimated the cost today, because of all the costs that keep going up, for, for an air-conditioned diesel bus is probably going to be in the four hundred and thirty five, hundred and forty thousand range. So if you take those two costs, and then the average maintenance cost, and the savings over twelve years, it's, it's up like a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. And that doesn't count the additional money that the state gives. So, because, because fuel costs are so high to run a diesel, electric is much more, uh, affordable as far. I think the equivalent that they estimate is like twenty four miles per gallon, uh, for electric versus probably eight miles to gallon for diesel. So there's savings there, uh, maintenance savings, you don't have to change oil. You know, you basically got tires, brakes, bearings, uh, so maintenance costs should be less. You know, again, the unknown is, is the battery, but Proterra, who we use for our battery, has been doing, uh, commercial electric buses for many years, and they fully believe that that battery will last the electric bus.
Speaking of just the bus itself, now, I know the battery, the, the engine, the, you know, drive make, all that's different, I understand that. But, you know, the cab of the bus, like, let's say, the bus driver hits a deer one morning, we got to get a new bumper. Are the parts of that electric bus compatible with the parts of your diesel bus as far as cosmetically?
If you look at that bus, the bumper, the hood, the grill, it's the same as, as your bus you have today.
As the Thomas buses we have today.
Yes. And, I mean, you're, you're a hundred percent Thomas, and so, so the part, part twice from, the body of the bus is, is the same bus you have today, it's twelve volts, uh, same switches, same, same controls. The driver would have no issue as far as getting in, learning how to operate it. The difference is when you, you step on that throttle, instead of hearing a, a diesel engine rev up, you just get it. It's very quiet. All you, all you hear is a, a few squeaks and rattles when you're going down the road, getting puddles and stuff, so. You know, it's, I've, I've driven a lot of miles, I've demoed it in a lot of counties. Like Joe mentioned, uh, Work County's been operating since September. Virginia has over two hundred in operation right now. They were, they were one of the first states where Dominion Energy got involved and actually did a pilot program to, to put electric buses out there. This was before the EPA. And if you want to learn more about the, uh, the EPA program, you can go to the website, EPA Clean School Bus Program, and it, it basically tells everything that, that, uh, you need to know as far as how the, how the rebates work. It is a rebate, basically, the, if you're selected into the lottery process, the money will, we're applying on, on your behalf, uh, as a third party, so the money will come to us. All we would do would be to send an invoice for the, what that didn't cover. And like Joe said, we would, we would work with the, with them and the power utility company to, to see what, you know, where you want your charger, uh, and, you know, what kind of cost we have there. Many times the utility companies, uh, work with you and, and at very little to no cost will come in and, and, and do what you need to do, set up a new meter, uh, provide power for that charger. And in, in the end, there's only more power, so, uh, you know, they're, they're behind this as well, so.
Do, sorry, do you have to have, uh, a separate charger for every bus you have? Or do you charge all your buses with one charger?
We, we recommend you have, have a charger for each bus. And, and the reason we do that is because if, you know, they only charge, you know, you can only plug one in. So, now they do have chargers that have multiple outlets that you can.
I wonder how that works.
But they get more costly. The charger we did in Work County is, is a, as Joe mentioned, a single-phase two forty. Most people have single-phase two forty at their house, and some of your, you put it in your, in your residence, and, and it charges their bus fine, because most of the bus routes are, uh, I'm going to say, especially in, in your county, sixty to seventy five miles at most, uh, and you're not taking trips. The bus has about a hundred and thirty eight optimum mile range. When I say optimum, I mean in, in ideal conditions. Now, wintertime, you're, you're going to see the range drop about twenty percent. So, you know, you're going, you're going to probably see about a hundred and twenty mile range in the wintertime. But still, more than half would cover most routes. And the chargers, uh, that Work County has, uh, more than gives them enough range for the afternoon, so, uh, and that's, you know, uh, you know, you can get a charger to charge that bus in, in two hours if you want to do, but you're going to spend a lot of money. We're talking, you're spending, you know, twenty thousand, twenty five thousand dollars for, for a, you know, twenty five to thirty thousand, or thirty KW charger, uh, to give you what you need between routes. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming and presenting to us and talking to us about that, we really appreciate it. This is a topic that not a lot of us have much experience on, and what I wanted to say is, you know, that, that we don't have any plan in the future to switch our fleet over to be all-electric. But the advantages to taking, uh, a greatly rebated bus with our fleet value and over time. um, they are a great benefit of our district. It, it truly does, um, it does have a, an impact. I personally ask our, um, I wanted to make sure that we talk to who we needed to on this. And I personally, um, talked with our, um, mechanic today. And I asked him if he thought it would be a good idea. And he, he did think it would be a good idea. I talked to him specifically about the maintenance and if we were able to keep this type of bus up. And there's a lot of unknowns and, and, you know, this could be, uh, I'm not going to say that I know everything about this, Julie, I don't. It could be a total flop. Um, but, uh, you know, next year, do I, do I know if we'll reapply? We might want to see how the battery works, you know, we might want to understand the bus and see how it runs and all of that. But as, it, it would just be, um, I'm, 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 we, we are both promoting it because of the fiscal responsibility to the district. And it's a way that the, the, the district has, um, a lot better outcome fiscally from getting, or at least applying for it. So I would recommend, I've got two options there, um, laid out in front of you. I would recommend allowing Matheny Motors to go ahead and start the application to see if we can win the lottery. Or if there is a consensus, I totally understand that this is an oil and gas, um, rich area. And people might have, are adamantly opposed to electric buses and what they add to the area, and I totally understand that. But we need to be able to make some type of decision whether to move forward or not. Fiscally, um, we need to be able to know that. So I would, I would make the recommendation to either give us the permission to allow Matheny Motors to complete the application and see if we can win the lottery of one of these buses at a reduced cost, greatly reduced cost, or postpone this motion so we can move past it one way or the other.
I would like to make a motion to allow Matheny Motors to complete the application for the Juell Electric Seventy Passenger Bus for Gilmore County Schools.
Second.
Okay, and then probably moving seconded to allow Matheny Motors to complete the application for the Juellie Electric Seventy Passenger Bus for Gilmore County Schools. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Or amendments to this motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman, you're recognized.
Yeah, I, I have further discussion. Uh, so just to put this back, to summarize a little bit, uh, from what I, the information that I've collected here. So, we're talking about a difference in our fleet value of about thirty-five thousand a year. Okay. We're talking about a savings from the feds, the state, whoever. Uh, you said over a five-year period, uh, or a twelve-year period, uh, twelve-year period, a hundred and fifty-one thousand. You, you threw that number.
That's the estimated total cost of savings.
Okay, so that was a twelve-year saving, so if you take that back to five, to keep that where it's at, that would be twelve thousand, five hundred. You take the thirty-five thousand that we're going to, that we're going to save every year from having this bus, or the fleet value, that thirty-five thousand. You add those two numbers and over a five-year period, we're talking about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. That's what that adds up to. My question to our board and what we need to ask, and Christie, I'm glad you're here, is, you know, we're, we're, we're a county that is fortunate enough to have passed a levy. Now, I understand there's a lot of these counties out here that don't have, I've talked to Calhoun County, I've, I've talked to them, I know they're applying for the bus. They don't have a levy. We have taxpayers that are willing to, you know, to put their money and trust it in us for the education of our kids. So my question is, per year, how much money do we raise from our levy funds? Do you know? Eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Are you asking for transportation?
No, it's, I'm just talking about the money that we get, that we pull from our levy, right here from our taxpayers in Gilmore County. What happens if we did not have that levy? What happens if we make a bad decision, we go oppose? Because what you have to understand is oil and gas, this just doesn't, this just doesn't, this is a bigger thing, this is a more global, this is geopolitics. You know, there, there are other, are alternatives of clean energy, um, you know, CNG, propane, and I know they're, they're not widely used. But the Green New Deal, this is where this is all came. The, I mean, the fact of the matter is, the EPA's budget ten times in the past two years. And, I mean, there's, they don't even have an internal auditing. If you want to throw, try, try throwing a hundred and six billion dollars at the EPA and they have no internal auditing methods. I mean, that's what we're, you know, that's the big questions, you know, with buses. You sell us this bus, two years from now, it doesn't fit us. We allowed to sell it? No. Five years. No, we're not allowed to. But who's watching over that? You know, this is a, this is a, this is a bigger issue than, than just, you know, hey, we're, we're going to get this extra money. This is the package deal. You're the salesman. Uh, you know, that's, this, that's a sales pitch. Uh, we don't always have to go with it, guys. That's all I'm saying. As, as taxpaying American citizens, we're, we're funding this bus, whether you, you think we are or not. The only difference is, is if we buy a diesel bus, that's putting that money back into the pockets of the people that pass our levy that give us eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Not eight hundred, or not one hundred and eighty-seven thousand every five years. If, if we go and we buy a battery bus, guess where, you know, I, and I've already told you about batteries, lithium batteries. And you can think that, that I'm, you know, right-wing or red or whatever you want to say. The fact of the matter is, I, I'm, I'm neither of those things. I just take each situation and I judge it upon, you know, my beliefs and the way that, that, what I think is right and wrong. Uh, I told you in our last meeting about lith- lithium mining, artisan mines, child slave labor, just slave labor in general, when it comes to, to the making of these batteries. That, that didn't correspond with.
Does that, um, include your iPhone?
Listen, uh, some things.
It's the same thing, man. Who has the floor?
Okay, uh, that's my personal thing. I'm not buying iPhones for, for Gilmore County. I'm, I'm looking at a bus. I'm looking at a very large purses, purchase. I'm talking about a four hundred thousand dollar purchase opposed to, you know, a cell phone or whatever we may use. And it doesn't make it right. I agree with you. It doesn't make it right. I do agree with you on that. Uh, but there are, we do have other options, you know, that's, that's the only thing. And I'm just saying, as a taxpayer of Gilmore County, if, if, if I know that my tax dollars are, are funding, fund, uh, funding, you know, and enriching China opposed to enriching the people that work in my community, then I'm not voting for that levy. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't instruct anybody to vote for it, if that's how we're going to spend their money.
May I have the floor, please?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
And, and you're right. I mean, you know, oil and gas is, is big, what, coal's big for West Virginia.
It is.
Not, not, not in this area, but think about how electricity is produced.
With coal.
In West Virginia, it's produced with coal or natural gas.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, we, we have, you know, electricity being produced with both coal and natural gas. And, and one thing Work County did with their bus, and I probably didn't tell you, but they put a sticker on the side of their bus, powered with West Virginia coal. Uh, so, and, and, you know, I, I understand your argument and, and, and I'm not here to talk you into this or not. I'm just saying that this is an opportunity and, you know, electricity, I mean, we, we see it on the news. I mean, all the car manufacturers are talking about, you know, all this money they're spending toward EV. And, and buses are ideally suited for electricity, because they're on dedicated routes. And, you know, they go in the morning, they got time to charge in the afternoon, and they go in the, you know, they're ready to go in the afternoon. So, so, you know, I understand what you're saying and, and, but, but, you know, it's, like I said, uh, electricity is produced with oil and gas as well as.
I understand. I'm talking about the, this, the manufacturing of the batteries. There are other, all, all, all energy. We're, that's the other part, you know, right here in West Virginia, right here in America, we, we are energy strong in oil and, and oil and gas and coal. Uh, why, why are we going to, why are we going to look outside of our own country to, to find means for transportation when we haven't right here in our country? It, it's.
Uh, to me, I see this less as a political platform and more as what is the best financial decision for our children. And it upsets me that you would, uh, encourage people not to vote for a levy.
Indeed.
Because we.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Miller.
Choice of.
You think that's.
That's despicable. That's despicable.
Well, you wait until this election cycle is just now starting.
Then don't endorse me, brother. Don't endorse me. You're not doing it right now, okay?
Meeting room will come to order. Dr. Bar, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, the fact is, I've, I'm the longest-serving member of this board. Um, and we have had, uh, threats come against us about we're not going to vote for levy, we're not going to vote for levy, whatever. Um, here's the deal. Not voting for the levy hurts the kids, period. And I'm, I, I, I just think it's despicable. There's people up here that would rather put their political stuff in front of the students. So remember, a vote against the levy is a vote against the students, period. Nothing political about it. Nothing political about it. It's a vote against the students.
So why don't we take these federal funds then, instead of putting them into electric-powered school buses and give them straight to the teachers then? Why, why do we have to?
You don't have that choice.
Yeah, that's not what this is about.
That's, once again, politics. I'd like to make a motion to table this, is what I'd like to make.
There's already motion on the table.
I have a question on the rebate.
So, oh, all right, so at this time, Mr., I didn't get your name, Fowler, okay, do you have, I want to hold your time up. Do you, okay, do you have anything else, or any other questions?
Question for.
Dust, do you have a question?
Well, it's just about the rebate. So, because last, last time it was, you get a bus and then you get money on top of it. But this sounds like the money's just coming straight from the federal, it's going to go to you to buy the bus, then we get the bus for whatever portion that we have to, left to pay on it. Is that correct?
The balance, yes, yeah.
So we're not getting any cash back on it, just to clarify.
You're getting cash back as, from reimbursement, from, to the state step four process. That's what Joe was.
Government handouts. Which is how. Helping the almighty American dollar.
Which is just for the maintenance portion?
It covers maintenance, it also covers replacement. And, and the way the step four program works, it, for each bus you have that's twelve years old, less than twelve years old, less than a hundred and eighty thousand miles each year, you get eight and a third percent allocation for, for every bus in your fleet that is, meets that criteria.
I just wanted to clarify because I think there was some confusion over whether or not the whole funds were coming back or going to be unrestricted on it. So I just wanted to make sure.
The funds on the, the funds on the actual, um, thirty-five thousand dollars that we would get back in fleet value, those are unrestricted funds, correct? We could use those to buy diesel buses, we could use those to buy diesel fuel, we could use those to buy electric buses.
As a board, you can choose to use.
You can choose to.
It, it comes back to transportation.
Right.
You know, they, they changed the laws a few years back to give the board's permission to spend that money any way they saw fit.
Right.
You know, ideally, you keep the transportation to.
Sure.
Your fleet.
You want to keep your fleet up and keep, keep the, you know, you'd always have, if you had a motor blow up or if you had, you know, an extra, um, you know, major expense.
If, if you choose to use it for anything else, but yes, that, that's.
And that's one of the reasons why that we, you know, it is a fiscal advantage for us to do that, because it's an ex, it could, it could, it, it could impact us fiscally like that every year for the life of the bus.
For the record, I'm not saying that anybody should also vote against the levy. I thank, thank goodness that we have taxpayers that, that do vote for our levy. My, upon, upon that is just my fear of people not voting for that, you know, when they, when they see. Because once again, I think we're going against jobs that support the families right here in our county.
I do think it's a valid point that we are in a very oil and gas-rich area. And we do need to consider those types of things, because it is a very, you know, there's still a lot of people that work in the energy industry in Gilmore County.
I also think if you look at, at, at the current news, what has been, has been put out there in the last three months, that, that the American culture is turning against EV vehicles. Not so much it's turning against it, but there are, there are EV vehicles piling up on sales lots and, and they're trying to get rid of them. And.
And that is true.
Yeah, and why, why, why are they trying to give them to us? I'm just saying, you know, sometimes it, things just aren't free. I understand that.
The reason that's happening is because of the application. I mean, as a, if I, if I had to do my job in, in an electric vehicle, I couldn't do it. Uh, I, I don't have the time to go and charge. You know, school buses are a dedicated route, they don't have those issues.
They're not driving during the day, they can.
You know, you're not going from here to Georgia or wherever, you're, you're going seventy-five, eighty miles, you're coming back, you know, and, 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 you know, it's, it's, you know, you've got the range to do that. You, you charge it at your convenience, not at your necessity. So, uh, that's the difference. And that's why people are, are not accepting the electric cars. I mean, I'm not ready, I'm not ready until they come up with one that, that can charge up as fast as I can fill up my fuel tank, I'm, I'm not ready.
Yeah, but if you got paid fifty thousand dollars a year to drive one.
I'd, I'd have to make some type of price.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. That's, that's, you know, you can polish it up any way you want to polish it up, but it's still a.
Uh, and again, I'm not, I'm not here to try to sell you on, on electric vehicles, because, you know, it's, it's, it's just, I don't think we are ready to stop using fossil-fueled vehicles and, and jump into the totally electric vehicles. I'm just saying that right now is a good opportunity to get a feel for what an electric vehicle can do for you, because it's almost, you know, I'd say ninety, ninety-five percent funded by the EPA through this clean school, school bus program. So, when that day comes that we do need a lot of electric school buses, you know, you've already had one, you know, you have very little cost in it, it, it actually added to your fleet, you've actually benefited from having it. Uh, and, and it was a good chance to, to get a, a good learning experience. Um, again, I, I'm not here to tell you they're, they're better than fossil fuels, because I don't think they are.
It's, I, I want, I'm not, I'm not saying that. Uh, it is strictly, I believe in green vehicles. I believe, I love it. You're talking about my iPhone, I lo-, I have a battery-powered chainsaw, lithium-powered chainsaw. It just comes down to the fact that I, I feel like it's a smack in the face to the, to the taxpayers.
Well, and I, I feel differently. I've, I feel like it's a smack in the face to the people who elected us to not be fiscally responsible with our money. And sometimes being fiscally responsible means putting our personal feelings about things aside.
It's not a personal feeling, I'm.
Looking at the financial numbers and crunching the numbers to determine what is best for our children. I mean, I have a personal opinion about electric vehicles, but my personal opinion is not what matters here. What matters here is the best decision for the children in Gilmore County. And, and doing that, I'm looking at mathematics.
Well, mathematics, once again, over a five-year period, that's going to be a total cost savings, or whoever's going to pay us, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. And like I say, if.
Which would buy a new diesel bus.
If this, if this decision were to be, you know, not, we wouldn't get the response from it, because maybe people, other people like myself would have personal feelings about it, would change their minds about our levy, and then we would lose out on the eight hundred and seventy-six thousand that we get a year. So I'm just trying to be, look at the bigger picture for our kids.
Is there any further discussion or questions for Mr. Fowler? Hearing none. Thank you, sir, for coming and presenting this evening. We appreciate it. Okay, is there any amendments to the main motion that is currently on the floor? Hearing none. I think we should, for this vote, I'd kind of like to make it a roll call vote. And then that way, there's no confusion on where the votes go, and then that way, we don't have to, you know, recall the eyes of the days. So, we do have a motion, a second on the floor, to allow Matheny Motors to complete the application for the Juellie Electric Seventy Passenger Bus for Gilmore County Schools. So if there's no further discussion or amendments to that motion, we'll proceed to the vote. Um, and we'll start with, uh, Mr. Freshire, can you cast your vote, sir?
Oh, of course you can. I will vote, uh, yes.
Okay, Dr. Bar?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
No.
Mr. President, no. Vote call is three to two, motion carries. All righty, so that will take us out of that item, and we will go back into new business and start with the school improvement specialist contract.
Give me one second to get back over there to that.
Last meeting, we had a presentation about where we're at academically, and this has been one of my new main focuses. I'm really trying to focus in on understanding where we're moving at, and you can see there in the executive content, we've got to move in reading proficiency from 37% proficient to 45. That was our, our board goal. From 28% to 35. In math, that was our board goal. We are on track to graduate, and as of right now, reducing down to 25% chronically absent, we're, we're at 24.4, something like that today with our chronically absent rate. It's going to be very close with chronically absent. That was very advantageous to drop at 5%. We're in the kind of winter slump. Everybody's sick right now, and we've raised up from 19% to 24%, but I'm hoping in the spring that'll come back down. We're on track to graduate. I had Mr. Payne come and discuss that with you all, and Mr. Payne highlighted that we were on track there with that goal. Our reading and math, we were very good all the way through the sixth grade, which is pretty good, because we have three, four, five, and six kind of on track. We need to work with seventh and eighth grade to do, you know, some improvement there. So what we've kind of chewed on several different times around our central office leadership team is how to get that done. And I've talked with other superintendents, and I've looked at what the cost might be to provide some additional support in those areas, and to be able to provide professional development, finding someone that can go into those classrooms and provide the feedback that's needed, and somebody that the teachers would feel, that, they would feel trusted enough to take advice from, and, and their concern from, and improve off of that, and that they can share in success with. And our teachers are doing some really good stuff in the classroom. I mean, we have some really good stuff going on. Our test scores are raising, our, our chronically absent rate is going down, our on-track-to-graduation rate is going up, and we've got some really good things going. We just need to dedicate some additional time to it. So I'm recommending there to make a motion to contract, to allow the superintendent to contract with Nisha Butcher, to provide school improvement specialist contracted services to Gilmer County schools until June 30th, not to exceed 16 hours per week at a rate of pay of $50 an hour. This would put her in the classrooms maybe one or two days a week, and then working with the district team and looking at that data and figuring out, okay, where do we need student engagement to happen at? Where are our weak areas? Working with our principals, providing some mentorship with those folks, providing additional data to those folks. And we're hoping that for a very minimal amount of cost, we can help move those, the needle on those goals that we've set. Like I said, we set pretty high goals as a group. You know, moving eight or nine percent is a lot academically in a year. It's a lot. And we are on track almost all the way.
We're doing so much better.
But we've got, we have to, we have to try to nudge that needle just a little bit further, and that's why I make that recommendation. And this person's going to help us develop a monitoring system that'll not only monitor, make sure we're doing what we need to be doing, but also providing support. We want to make sure this is a supportive role to the teachers, not somebody that goes in and, that, you know, terrorizes the teachers. That's why we've, that's why we felt like Nisha would be a good fit, somebody that they could trust, you know, and somebody that they would take feedback from.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's recommendation on the school improvement specialist contracted services. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All righty, we'll go to junior Appalachian music program instructor.
This is funding that we've already put out. We'd like to start the, the program in mid-February. I've worked with Jesse Mills, which is an old-time country and bluegrass musician, to be the instructor. I think he'll do a very good job. He's done this for a very long time at D and E College, the Augusta, different places around the state. So I, I really am very happy to, that he's able and has the time to do this. This would be me making a recommendation to allow superintendent to execute a contract with Jesse Mills for contracted services, to provide instruction to the junior Appalachian music program participants at 50 hours per week for four hours per week, to provide string instruction, and also cover the instructor's mileage at a current rate of .67. And I've got that updated in our, in the instructor contract, for 12 weeks of instruction or concluding, ending on June 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's recommendation on the junior Appalachian music program instructors. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion?
I have some questions.
Sure.
Uh, have we got that program like up off the ground yet?
No, we don't have the number of students. If that, if we would happen not to get students, then, then we wouldn't be.
Have we put anything out yet?
We're just getting ready to. We have a, the, the first round, we haven't. We haven't put it out. It's going to be the last week in January. We have had an initial meeting with Mrs. Kasunis and Doc, Dr. O'Dell, and we're having another meeting on the 31st. And I'm going to invite Dr. Barr and David O'Dell, Ms. Kasunis, and, and we're going to try to get that information out to the students in a sign-up, and see how many we have. We'd like to have 10 participants for the first round of it. If we can get 10 participants, we'd like to have at least that, and then start scheduling some dance events and different things like that.
If I recollect, didn't, will this, will this money come out of the $25,000 that we earmarked for that, that we've been for, so that'll come?
We've already moved that money, and it's going to come out.
Have we done the math, like, does that math add up, and does that math?
Yeah, it's much cheaper than the $25,000. I mean, if you look at four hours per week for the 12 weeks at $50 an hour, it's minimal compared to the whole cost of that. That'll actually last us several years. I mean, we're, we should have a few years of this if we can, if we get kids interested. If not, then.
I think we will.
I think we will too. And if not, then, you know, if we get to a point where we don't have kids interested, and then we'll look at reallocating that funding for some.
And families, because I think you should encourage the families to.
Absolutely. One of the things.
Because kids always need transportation, and if someone in the family's interested, then they'll be more likely to bring the kid and come in and sit.
And let me tell you, Jesse is a world-renowned musician, and our kids are going to have the absolute top-notch. I mean, he is a great instructor, and an unbelievable musician of all sorts of stringed instruments, so. It, it's not going to be just limited to old-time or bluegrass. I mean, he's a great old-time country, and he's just got a, a wide range that he could work with kids that are interested.
No more questions.
All righty, any further discussion? Hearing no amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All righty, we'll go to architect firm selection for the freezer project at Gilmer County High School.
I am going to have to do the option one recommendation to make a motion, or excuse me, the option two recommendation here. I, I don't feel like we've gotten, we haven't gotten, we've called, but we haven't got responsible. We want to make sure that we've got all of our documentation for the SBA on the selection of this done, and we have not interviewed. We only had one person respond back with this submission of qualifications. That's one thing that Ms. Hacker and Mr. Frazier and I are going to have to sit down. We made a call to the SBA. We need to sit back down and do that. So in order to complete all the criteria, I think we need to table this and put it on the next agenda, even though it's going to slow us down a few weeks. But we want to make sure on this project, we do all the requirements that are required for us to pick a firm with the qualifications. And sometimes that includes interviews and things like that, and we honestly don't know if we're ready for that yet.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's recommendation of option two on the architect firm selection for the freezer project at Gilmer County High School. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All righty, so that will take us into personnel. And I would like to move pursuant to West Virginia Code 6-9A-42, the West Virginia Code, the board go into executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters, which if discussed in public might affect adversely the reputation of any person. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been properly moved and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I feel like basically in this world it's so serious you have to change and stuff already done. And they say why didn't I do it? And that stuff takes hours ever because you have to. They changed all the moment stuff which then would have had.
You're still fine. Oh, I'm having a hot dog later.
Alright, do we have a motion to rise from executive session?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second to rise from executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Alrighty, we are back to personnel. Dr. Many.
Um, under service, I'd like to make a recommendation. Steve Rollins Supervisor of Maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve Steve Rollins as Supervisor of Maintenance per the superintendent's recommendation. Is there any further discussion on that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Okay, extracurricular.
Extracurricular, I recommend Corey Phillips Literacy Tutor, Gilmer County Elementary School.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second to approve Corey Phillips as Literacy Tutor at Gilmer County Elementary School. Is there any further discussion to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Okay. Alright, there's no continuous improvements. Where did the superintendent's update? Dr. Many.
Just um, a couple different updates. Um, I put the information on there for our um, administrative council meeting. We had an administrative council meeting and um, one of the things that came out of that uh, meeting, um, and I, I'm, I don't know if Dr. Barr has a, a, up, I don't want to take your report time, but one of the things that I thought that uh, we needed to discuss from that meeting was, in our meeting in April, we need to hold an additional meeting, a work session in April. I would like for you guys to participate in their linkage meeting where you actually physically go to the center. They cook an extremely good meal. You can walk through its after hours and we can listen to what our students are doing at the Career Center and our linkage meeting, have our board and the Calhoun Board there to support each other and to support the center. That is going to be sometime in April that they schedule that, so I'm just giving you heads up. We will probably have another special meeting in April, a work session. When I get that, excuse me, when I get that date, I'll let you know, but it's an evening that you can come down. They'll feed a good, feed you a good meal and you can get some idea about what all programs that they offer there at the center. That's one of the things that wa- that was a recent update. The second thing that I wanted to talk about was, they've also got um, uh, kind of an employee of the month. I don't know if you know much about simulated workplace, but there's, they simulate an actual workplace down there where they you, wear uniforms and they have a boss and all of that. And they've been highlighting some students and some employees of the month and different things down there. So I wanted to give you a couple of those updates. Secondly, uh, coming up, we've got, I've got um, I don't know if th- this is, if you guys remember, but I will be traveling out of state in February to San Diego to go to this uh, um, National Superintendent Association Conference and I'm very excited about that. I just wanted to give you a heads up. I'll be leaving the 12th. I think I'm back on the 17th. But I'm going to be leaving and going out of state for that conference if you need me. You know, I will be available via text and everything, but I'm going to be sitting through some really good professional development with the leaders of the state of West Virginia, so I'm very excited about that. And I appreciate your support on that. I've given you an update about continuous improvement and where I think it's got to go and our process and we are working diligently to make that happen. And you got the uh, data from our um, iReady benchmark um, at last week. I gave you the number of chronically absent. We're still under our 25%. I hope we stay there. We're really doing well and on track as far as that goes. So I really want to stay focused on our original strategic plan goals and I want to talk about those goals often um, at the meetings and just try to get those goals met because that was the original plan, was to meet those goals. And if it's not me, I've got to keep coming back to them and keep trudging along, trying to figure out ways to meet those goals. So those are some of the updates that I've got going on and those conferences and those things that I've got going are giving me ideas to help meet those goals. So that's what's going on as far as with me and um, with our team. Another thing, just some quick feedback. I, the board docs, if there's anything that you would like to see me do differently on board docs, just let me know. But I think I've got my way figured out on there and if it looks okay to you guys, that's how I plan to do it. And I ha- plan to have that out on the Friday before the meeting at some point in time. Seems okay?
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Alrighty, we'll move into board member comments and start with Mr. Fresh Air.
I have no comments.
Dr. Barr?
Uh, yes, just a uh, update on the Calhoun Gilmer Administrative Council. Um, a couple of things we talked about earlier this week, uh, or last week rather. Uh, first of all, see if this doesn't sound exciting. Family Flobotomy Night. Doesn't that sound like a what a, come on, you'd be all over that, wouldn't you? Yeah, oh yeah? So it was a great time, wasn't it? Yeah, yeah. And from what I understand, it was a, a great event. Mrs. Burns shared the couns- uh, shared with the council that Family Flobotomy Night was a huge hit with over thirty individuals, which is wonderful. That's super cool. Uh, sixth and eighth grade visits. Uh, Mr. Stern shared that sixth grade visits were scheduled for January 18th, but they were uh, rescheduled and eighth grade visits will be February 22nd. Obviously, the weather's not working with us here. And then um, for the entire board, um, and, and Tony was very much a part of this conversation as well regarding the uh, 2024, 2025 calendar. Um, we need to remember that we are two school districts. we need to remember that we are two school districts that have one school between us. So when we are making the school calendar, let's please keep in mind that we do have the Career Center that encompasses both calendars. Okay? Thank you. That's all I have.
Dr. Miller?
From the WVU-Gilmer County Extension Service, they have Annie's Project, which is a farm risk management program. It starts February 12th. Dinner is provided each evening along with amazing trainings and fellowship with other female farmers. If you're interested in this, you can contact Daisy Bailey at the Glenville WVU-Gilmer County Extension Office.
Mr. Check.
Thank you.
All righty, to finish it out real quick, I enjoy the legislative session, and that, some people tell me I'm crazy, but I just thought the public ought to be aware, on the first week of the current legislative session, there were a total of 1,125 bills introduced. Of those, 98 of them related to public education, constituting 9% of the total of bills introduced on that first week. So that, to me, is kind of crazy. 70 of those come from the House and 20 of, 28 of those come from the Senate. There are five that are specifically addressing county board of educations, things that we would have to comply with, and that's House Bill 4200, House Bill 4345, House Bill 4465, Senate Bill 144, and Senate Bill 159. So we get those updates weekly from the School Board Association, and I think, you know, trying to keep up with that, and if there's something that, you know, may do our county some good that we need to advocate for, let's pay attention to those and see, we'll see what we can get done. So that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
All righty, it's been properly moved in a second during the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I think that's a direct correlation with how upset West Virginians are with the education system.
Mm-hmm.